Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now in session for this regular meeting Tuesday, May 21st. We have several things on the agenda. We're going to get started. But this morning, we will probably, just as a matter of course, I want to make sure everybody knows, taking more frequent breaks where Sister, Commissioner Sanders just had a knee operation. So she can get up and stretch a little bit, we've probably taken more frequent breaks today. We'll do our best to be on our best behavior and if we call it five minutes, make it five minutes. But that's what we're going to be doing. I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that before we get started.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Not a problem at all. If you would, let's please stand for the prayer and the pledge. Father, I thank you today for everything you're doing in our midst. Father, I thank you for the opportunity and the privilege it is, Lord, to not only discuss and know matters that pertain to this county and to our future, God, but to give us the opportunity, Lord, to exercise wisdom which you give and understanding, Lord, which you cause us to have in every situation, every decision we make. Father, I thank you today for touching, Lord, and helping us in this time. And we especially remember the Knight family today in their time of loss and everything they're going through. Be with them and strengthen them today, Father, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a minute of personal privilege, I want to, before we go on with the agenda, do something I forgot to do at the beginning. The Knight family on St. George Island last night lost everything they had. They are okay, but they lost their house and all their belongings. So we want to remember them today, and that's what I did in prayer. But you know, it's difficult. Having been there before as a junior in high school, it's difficult when you lose everything you own. You know, I don't know how extensive it was for them, but I know for myself to this day, the only family pictures we have are ones that our relatives had, because it was all lost. So we just need to remember them. And a big thank you to the St. George Island Volunteer Fire Department. They handled everything well, as far as what I've been told. The house went really quick, but thankfully, that's all that transpired. So would that move on?
East Point Fire Department also.
Okay. Well, I wasn't told that. I'm sorry. Sometimes we don't have complete information. Everybody that helped with the fire is greatly appreciated. Mr. Maroon, we have a change to our agenda, correct?
We do, sir.
We're taking some off of it, correct?
Well, yes, I'm sorry. So I have where you see I indicated it's the, I'm sorry, the 130 workshop with Appalachian Regional Planning Council. It's probably correctly online. It was done after I already printed these agendas. That that is postponed until June. They thought they would have some information to present this afternoon. That didn't work out for them, so we're going to reschedule that meeting until June, hopefully, but then it'll be rescheduled. Yes, and I think that's about it. The only change we have for today.
Okay, so we'd be removing that off our published agenda?
One more thing, sir. I do want to point out, as I try to every morning. So most of the times on the agenda are approximate, with the exception, today, we have three public hearings. They started 11. They can start after 11, but we cannot address those public hearings prior to 11:00 a.m. this morning. So they're indicated on the agenda as timed certain items on the agenda.
Okay, sounds good. So I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda, taking the workshop off.
So moved. Second.
So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Anderson, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, first on the agenda then is approval of minutes and payment of the county bills.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, with a second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, now we're going to move to public comments. I will ask some questions. So most of these I see are about the landings, which is coming up later. Is everybody on here wanting to speak during public comments or later?
I'm going with later, if later's allowed.
Later's definitely allowed. There's no confusion about that, if that's when everybody wants to speak. There is one here, Mr. Covington. It does say general comments. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Please come forward, state your name for the record. You have five minutes, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are we doing today?
Doing good.
It's finally good to be home, instead of being in Atlanta and being on a Zoom call and finally getting to meet you all and getting to meet you all as a board. My name is David Covington. I live at 665 East Gulf Beach Drive. Been down getting my house ready for the island guests for this summer season. I've owned a house on St. George Island since 2004, and I'm one of the administrators for the large SGI Facebook group that many of you know of and are part of. It's quite the vocal group of 72,000 members. We currently are adding about 50 members a day and doing about 100,000 engagements a month in that group. I'm also the founder of the Vacation Rental St. George Island Group, which has 24,000 members in it, which strives to marriage owners and renters together and touch with each other so that they can do direct bookings. I'm also the founder of the St. George Island Owners Only Group, which is about 1,500 members that are made up of SGI owners only. A group to help with communication issues about St. George Island. I come to you this morning with some brief, general concerns and suggestions. I don't have any answers, but I've got some opinions that I just wanted to share with you guys for y'all to kind of chew on a little bit and think about. I usually do these meetings via Zoom, but I'm just glad to be here this morning and be able to talk with you face to face. First off, I want to say thank you to each and every one of you for serving the community. I appreciate the conversation I've had with several of you over the past 20 years concerning issues in the county, specifically with St. George Island. We, as a county, have lots of challenges. I'm sure you all know that. Just a few that I want to point out as a priority, and I'll be very, very brief. I know I'm limited on time here. The first is Weems. I fully support the growing opinion that the county itself needs to be out of the hospital business. I am all for the hospital needing to be in the county, but the county needs to be out of the hospital business. We, as the taxpayers of this county, are funding a current losing proposition. We need to find a better solution. Affordable housing. We definitely need to have affordable housing for the teachers, the doctors, the first responders, problems. I did talk with a gentleman the other day. We were talking about the issue that a bill from the Sheriff's Department brought up last month about the school board property up on 65. I'm fully supportive of the county getting involved in affordable housing. We need a better solution for that. Code enforcement in the county, we definitely need that. We definitely need it on the island. I've told several of you, we need to spend the money to get a good code enforcement person, somebody that's not out there just writing citations, but somebody out there that's able to communicate and educate with people. From the Leave No Trace Ordinance to, you know, fill issues to stormwater management issues, we need to be able to address. We need to make this a priority, and we need to get this done. The issue with mobile vendors on the island and where they're going to park, we need to figure out a solution for that and what we're going to do. Are we going to charge these people, or are we going to just allow them to have $150 peddler license a year? Are we going to put them in the public right away? Are we going to make it just for the county? Are we going to make it just for the island? We need to come up with a solution for that. I believe that's a growing problem that we've had over the years. You know, I can see on July 4th on Franklin Boulevard, you know, if we got a public right away there, people eventually parking, and that's going to be a major mess with all the traffic that we have, especially on the weekend for turn days. So we need to be able to address that issue. Parking, you know, we now are starting to get the parking issue because everybody's coming over from Alligator Point, since we're having such issues at Alligator Point. They're, you know, it's booked in Carabel Beach, so guess what? St. George Island is the next down the map. So a lot of the day trippers are coming down, and we're seeing a growing problem. And I'll tell you, one of the biggest issues that I see is especially along West Gulf Beach Drive, on the north side of the bike path, you know, on a busy weekend, somebody's going to open their door, a kid, a parent. Somebody's going to open the door, and when, on a weekend, you know, dad's looking to find a house, he's going to end up hitting somebody if we allow parking to continue along West Gulf Beach Drive. We need to come up with an issue. But I do congratulate you guys on getting that new parking lot on St. George Island. It was definitely needed, and it's very beautiful over there. Stormwater management and fill issues, we've already heard about that. We know about that. Fixing the SGI boat ramp issues, you know, I'm glad we're addressing that, hoping that we can get that jetty in to help with the boat problems over there in the launch. Golf carts are still an issue, and we just saw that with the unfortunate flipping and wrecking of a golf cart last week on West Third and West Gory. Effective enforcement is key to helping maintain safety. I will say this week, I've been here since last Monday, and I will say that it is better. I did see a couple of golf carts, but it's much better than it's been in years past. Speed on Gulf Beach Drive is really bad. This morning, I almost got hit by a guy, and he was doing probably close to 65 or 70 miles an hour this morning. I'm hoping that the radar signs that we've approved are going to help. I do believe that they will help. I've got one in my neighborhood in Atlanta, and it does help us reduce the speed. Maybe not for long periods of time, but it will help for the people who are coming down here, especially during the high season. One other thing I want to say, you know, we've seen a large amount of new building and lots on the island and a lot of remodeling on the island. You know, the biggest challenges we face as far as homeowners goes, and I speak for a transient person down here, right? I don't get homestead down here. I don't get to get all the extra benefits that the primary residents get to get down here. But the home insurance and the property taxes are killing us. I'm not even sure this year whether I'm actually going to be able to get insurance. And I'm with frontline now, but I'm not sure come August, when we're in the heart of hurricane season, that I'm even going to be able to do it. Right now, the problem is, is that the governor is not, you know, he signed a new bill to help people that are homesteaded down here for primary houses, but for people for short-term rentals, it's extremely difficult to get homeowners insurance down here. Lastly, I just want to say thank you to all of you for what you do and what you're doing for the county. I know it's often a very thankless job. You all are doing a wonderful thing for our community. And I, being an outsider and a transient owner on the island, do not get any votes in this county, but I'm very thankful for all of you that have good, that I have frank good conversation with, that listen to me and take my thoughts into consideration. I hope that my thoughts and suggestions have helped the community when talking about the millage rates and taxes in our county. Most people may not know that since 2015, and this is very important, that since 2015, our county millage rate has gone down almost an entire mill. And that says a lot for this board and the commissioners that we've had before us. In 2015, the millage rate was 6.3065, and in 2023, it's 5.4707. It's unfortunate that the state has mandated to our county tax appraiser that our county property values were too low and needed to be raised to reflect valuations more towards market value, which has raised almost all of our property taxes dramatically. I really want to point this out because that is important in this public setting to recognize this. As many of you, I'm sure, are aware, we have lost a lot of good, very longtime locals that have left the county. I'm not even sure how much longer I can stay in the area. I love Franklin County. I love our culture here. I love our local people here. We are all genuine, good folks. And even though I'm a transient owner, I hope I can also call myself a local Franklin County person. I appreciate you all giving me a chance to speak this morning. I'm sorry if this was a little long-winded, but I felt it was very important to bring up some of these points. I look forward to seeing what's ahead in the future for Franklin County. Thank you.
Thank you. And most all the others here, John Alver, Allison Hudson, Cyril Klaus, Barbara Sanders, Rebecca Jattan. Y'all wanting to speak on item seven, correct? Mr. Maroon, could you get that for me, please? All right, so we will move on from public comments. That's for... Oh, I skipped her. I sure did.
You ready?
We'll go, yes, ma'am.
Good morning. Michelle Maxwell, Clerk of Court. Board action is requested relative to the Value Adjustment Board, VAB. Two county commissioners must be appointed. The board must appoint a commissioner to serve as the chairman. A citizen member who owns homestead property within the county must be appointed, and the citizen member cannot be a member or employee of any taxing authority. Board action requested is to appoint two commissioners, one as chairman of the VAB board, and appoint another nominee as a citizen member of the VAB. And Mr. Paul Rigemeyer has volunteered to serve as that citizen member if you choose to approve.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Otis, didn't you serve on it last year?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes, didn't you, I mean, Commissioner Ward. I'm always doing that.
That's my name.
Didn't you serve on it last year also?
Yeah, I served on it the year before.
Year before. Rebecca, did you serve on it last year?
No, it's been a couple of years since I've been.
Okay, well, down to, you know, I'm looking at two of us that need to serve on it, I guess.
We also try to, you have commissioners that are not running for election to serve on the VAB.
Well, that's just me and Otis then. Okay.
What did you say?
Ready?
You ready?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Crew, may I ask a question? Usually, we look at commissioners that are not in, have an election to serve on the VAB.
I got you.
Yeah, because it kind of interferes a little bit. I make a motion that myself, Commissioner Sanders, and Commissioner Otis Amison will serve as two members for the board, because I knew y'all were going to put it on us anyway, so I jumped out of Stalin down. But I make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
And we also need a chairman.
Huh?
We also need to, you know, appoint a chairman of the VAB.
We need you to chair.
Otis can chair.
Okay. And add Mr. Paul Rigemeyer as the...
Yes. Do you amend your motion to make him the chair and add Mr. Paul Rigemeyer as the citizen?
I amend my motion to reflect that.
So we have a motion on the floor, finally, from Commissioner Sanders, and second by Commissioner Anderson, that Commissioner Sanders will be the chair of the Value Adjustment Board. Commissioner Anderson will serve as the other member from the county. Mr. Paul Rigemeyer will serve as a citizen seat on the board of Value Adjustment.
Yes. You going to chair?
You chair.
I said it backwards.
I want Otis to chair.
Just backwards. Any other discussion before we move on?
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, Michelle, Clerk Maxwell, can you explain real quick so that people don't, aren't aware of what this entails, just real quick, what a value adjustment is?
It's contesting your property taxes, basically. You file a petition, and it goes before the board, and then the board will decide. The past three, going on three years, they've been settled outside of a hearing. So typically, that's what happens. The property appraiser is really good. The people will actually go in and talk to her. She's really good about sitting down with the homeowners and trying to come to a conclusion, and that's especially what happens. Whenever we get petitions, we do find out. Sometimes, they're not going to the property appraiser to try to settle before they file the petition. So technically, we may not even ever make it to an actual hearing, but we will have a meeting just organizing the VAB. That will happen, but that might be the only time you meet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion?
Just what you said, we're going to have a meeting?
Yes, we'll have a meeting.
Make sure I'm talking into this.
Yep. We will coordinate with everyone on the board to make sure that the date is okay with everyone before we set anything. I don't know when we'll set that just yet, but we'll get with everybody and make sure it's a good time for everybody.
All right, thank you.
All right. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Maxwell. All right, Ms. Karen Pavlowski from the Rybar Group.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome. Get my presentation showing. And you should be able to see the presentation okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to be here with you today to present on how the Rybar Group and I can help you explore what options exist for George E. Weems Memorial Hospital and continue to provide health care to the Franklin County community. Looking at the agenda for today, I'll be covering the Rybar Group difference, project scope, estimated timeline as it would look today, questions, and then additional information. There'll be time at the end of my presentation for questions, but if the Board of Commissioners, feel free to ask questions throughout if you prefer, whichever preference you have.
Yes, ma'am.
A little bit about myself. Again, my name is Karen Pavlowski. I was born and raised and still live in rural Michigan. Over the past 30 years, I've had the privilege to support critical access hospitals and rural healthcare providers. For the first 23 years of my career, I was employed directly with a couple of critical access hospitals, converting one of those critical access hospitals in 2000, and then I also converted several provider-based clinics to rural health clinics. There's a huge advantage in working in a small rural hospital, being directly involved with those day-to-day operations. Although anyone that has worked in a smaller organization can understand that a job title doesn't always indicate direct and only job responsibilities. My roles in these organizations included directly dealing involvement with patient accounting, human resources, purchasing, receiving, safety environment of care, and all facets of finance, including various titles, including financial assistant while I was in college, is how I started my career, and healthcare was actually in college as an intern, as a financial assistant, and then working into business office manager, director of finance, and then CFO. For the last seven years, I've been working at the Rybar Group. For the last seven years, I've been working at the Rybar Group, supporting rural healthcare providers across the country. My responsibilities there include cost report preparations, cost report reviews, reimbursement reviews and support, operational assessments, special projects, and also currently, when I first started, and again, now I'm in around CFO roles as well. So that kind of function is an additional support to the hospital and to our system that owns the hospital's finance department. All these responsibilities and operational exposure provides a great understanding of what it takes to keep healthcare viable and available in the community. The other individual on the slide here, Mr. Rick Reed, is the president and the CEO of Rybar Group. He has a few more years of direct healthcare experience than I do, because experience goes across the whole country in variety of roles, a variety of states, right, with different organizational structures. And he also has experience working with provider, prior audit experience, working with different insurance providers as well. So between the two of us, we're the high-end level of the rural health leadership here at the Rybar Group that would be supporting you. We are 30 years behind Weems. Weems is celebrating their 65 years, so we're currently, our 35-year anniversary passed last month, so we've been supporting healthcare providers nationwide for the last 35 years. Looking a little bit about the Rybar Group, again, we're based here in Michigan. The one advantage that we have is we only work in the healthcare industry. So everyone within the Rybar Group, their only focus is on healthcare, how we can help providers across the country, making sure that they are reimbursed appropriately as much as possible and reasonable, and looking at other opportunities, looking at root causes, looking for compliance, and everything else from the healthcare side. We have over 300 years within our staff of exposure in the healthcare industry. We have a lot of different types of individuals, whether they work directly in providers, at hospitals directly, clinics, they worked at different Medicare administrative contractors, or MACs they're called, senior auditors, different areas of other industries, different areas of other types of businesses that support the industry as well. And our mission is that we don't dabble in healthcare, but we specialize in the reimbursement and revenue cycle services to give you the best possible outcome. Another thing to look at is, again, we focus on healthcare. We have a lot of rural health experience. We ensure optimal reimbursement. We have great attention to detail, definitely a being counter from that standpoint, robust strategies, in-house and hospital experience. We have a very experienced team, innovative solutions. So a lot of projects, like the one, this one that you're looking at exploring with another partner, is definitely one of those, even though a lot of hospitals in the country have the same experiences and the same types of issues that you're having, it still looks specifically at what you're going to need for your community in Franklin. And we also reach from coast to coast. So looking at the different, the next agenda item is looking at the proposed project scope. So we kind of, I base this slide on the different initial conversations and communications that I received when I was reached about looking at this engagement. The project rationale, basically, the driving forces behind Franklin County Board of County Commissioners Initiative. First one, health, running a hospital is complex. It requires a significant amount of time, it's significant, requires a significant amount of resources, knowledge base, and it's a very time-consuming, complex industry to be in. There's also the financial needs of the hospital, present a significant impact on the county, as what was previously mentioned, and also sports in the audit reports. And then the other questions being asked are what other options are available for providing healthcare in Franklin County. There's Weems Memorial Hospital, but there's also other healthcare needs in the county, and how are those being met, and how those can continue to be met in the future? And is it time for the county to get out of the hospital business? Are there other factors that I didn't mention here, or does this, from a high level, cover four basic assumptions? All right, hearing none. So the one area we're looking at this is to keep in mind that this is a high level to keep an open mind into what options are available. So we're looking at what we can do to explore and assess available options, to look at the future direction for the county healthcare needs. So again, looking at the boards in time, somewhat was on the previous slide, but also looking more in-depth as to what that exactly means, making sure those goals and objectives are met. The other thing within those goals and objectives is for, again, Weems Memorial Hospital and Franklin County. Franklin County has a current community health improvement plan, taking a look at that that includes a lot of organizations and community partners. There's also the economic impact on the hospital housing in Franklin County, again, looking at that to see, making sure we're taking the best advantage of everything in there, and that everyone's aware of what impact there is in having a hospital within the county. Then looking at assessing the different options available. Again, there's a lot of different options available. I didn't put them on the slide because this is where we need to be a little bit creative sometimes, and making sure what works for one doesn't work for everybody, but we want to make sure we find the right, all the solutions that are available to you, and then identify the benefits and the risks. So it's, but the other thing with the different solutions, it's not just the financial impact of those solutions, it's also the healthcare delivery impact. So whether you're looking at a different provider type, critical access, if you're going to stay a critical access hospital, if you're going to become a rural emergency hospital, if you're going to look at a different other provider type, are you going to look at selling the hospital as a whole? Was there a question?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Whether you're looking at, if you're looking at interest in selling the hospital as a whole business, whether you're looking at just leasing the building out and having someone else run it, similar to what you have as a management firm right now, but maybe looking at doing something where you're still not responsible for the day-to-day operations of the hospital, whether you're going to remain independent, whether you're going to become part of a system, if you're going to look at a partnership, making sure you're finding that correct partner, whether you're going to be in a smaller partnership with just a couple facilities, or in multiple facilities as a bigger part of the system, there's a variety of different sizes there, if there's a joint venture option. And unfortunately, the, everyone's aware, there's a lot of mergers, acquisitions, and unfortunately, even closures in healthcare, and it's unfortunately becoming, it has always been a problem in the most recent 20, 30 years, 40 years, but it's continuing on with closures of hospitals across the country, which no one wants to see. But, and just keeping in mind that no change in direction or no decision is also a decision as to what you do. You need to look at, you know, are you going to invest in the current physical structure? Is there something different that can be done there? And again, the important part to identify the benefits and risk is to make a sound decision what structure currently exists, and then what needs to be changed. And then once we get past looking at the different options in a decision that is made, then we need to look at the action plan, developing and implementing an action plan to ensure the success and the desired outcome. And then we would also be looking at the implementation support that could be short-term, long-term. Again, we'd be throughout you, without, throughout the whole process. Each of you live and work in the community, so the decision of what the future holds for the healthcare Franklin County affects you both professionally and also personally. I think another area that's important, too, is looking at, regardless of where you, which direction you choose to go, it's really important to enhance the operational value of the hospital. So one area of doing that is looking at the current operations. What else can be done? If you're going to continue to run the hospital, if you're going to try to sell the hospital, if someone else is going to come in, you want to make it as profitable and attractive as possible. One area is to look at the different cost reports. Anything you look at within the cost reports, there's opportunities there in the past, present year, and the future year. So within the cost reports themselves, we can actually go back and reopen 2019, 2020, and 2021, those three years are all available to be reopened, if there's opportunities there. 22 and 23 can also be amended. 23 was a spiral in the last couple months. But there's definitely opportunities there within your cost report to assess whether there's additional funding opportunities available there from Medicare or other sources. Another area to look at, definitely within the reimbursement, is also the change from your Medicare fee-for-service to Medicare managed care. Again, this is not uncommon across the country right now, as more and more Medicare beneficiaries are moving away from the traditional red, white, and blue fee-for-service coverage to a Medicare managed care plan of some sort. The reimbursement on that to the hospital is significantly different. There's different requirements that are needed, and a lot of pre-authorizations, making sure other things are done at the beginning, make sure you get reimbursed in the end. Looking at the different provider type options, again, you're currently a critical access hospital, you have swing beds there, it doesn't look like they're used as heavily as possibly they could be as one option. Another option is looking at the rural emergency hospital designation. Right now, it doesn't look like the state has approved that still. I just looked last night, it looks like the state of Florida has not approved that yet, but that is an option that was designated within the Centers for Medicare and Medicare Services as of January 1st, 2023, as an opportunity for a critical access hospital to convert to a rural emergency hospital. You really want to look here again at your financial benefit, but also the impact to the community. So if we were to look at those paths, there's pros and cons of that. Again, I don't want to come up with any preconceived ideas, but there's also a lot of reimbursement you would have to switch over to become a rural emergency hospital. Rural cycle improvements, this is not uncommon within a lot of hospitals to look at different areas that they can improve their revenue cycle. Again, from the time a patient shows up to the door until you get paid, the quicker you can get paid, the most efficient way you can get paid, reducing any denials for pre-authorizations or identifying those initially, looking at decreasing your days and accounts receivable. Again, that was all holdup cash, and it reduces the chance of collections for the services you've already provided or rendered. And then looking at different operational improvements, doing a financial analysis of the different service lines. A lot of hospitals, especially the smaller ones, have noticed over the last year to year and a half, now that you're post-COVID funding, it's, cash is becoming a little tighter, and cash is a little different to operate. Unfortunately, during the pandemic, there's, there was, unfortunately during the pandemic, a lot of bad things happened. The one thing that was good is there was a lot of additional funding available to a lot of facilities, but a lot of facilities have had to readdress and look at how they're currently operating to making sure that their cash needs are being met. And that would be something, again, regardless of which direction you decide to go, regardless of what service, regardless of how you're looking at providing that healthcare service in your community, you're still going to want to really assess these different areas to see how can you be as strong as you can be for yourself, for the hospital, the community. And again, whether you're going to keep managing it, someone else is going to manage it, you want to make it as strong and viable as possible. So looking at just a suggested timeline, again, this is just an approximation. There'd be a more customized timeline, you know, at that point in time, when we can meet with the board commissioners and Weems. So looking at if the board of county commissioners was able to select whichever provider, partner, vendor they're looking at in June, looking at getting down there and doing some strategic meetings in July or August, looking at the different options, presenting those, developing the action plan, implementing, and then, I said, we say project conclusion in November, but it's never going to truly end until everything is done and tied with a pretty bow. But again, the biggest thing is making sure we're securing your approval throughout the process, the ongoing support is available. And again, this is just an estimation as to how we see this running. My understanding is your management contract currently ends in November, so that was kind of the push for that end of it, but also recognizing a lot of things need to happen between now and then. So this is an extremely tight timeline that can happen, but looking to just try to give you a little bit of idea of how to see how this would work. And then I have some other information to provide at the end. Anybody have any questions or thoughts that you have right now?
I do, Mr. Chairman. On your, when you were talking about the cost report optimization.
Yep.
I didn't catch, if you could kind of elaborate a little bit more on that. So you said 21 to 23, we can capture, can we capture reimbursement? So if we go back and look at bills, I guess you could say, cost that the hospitals incurred in terms of billing insurance, is that capable of being captured and reimbursed? Is that something we could do?
So the cost report is specific to Medicare fee-for-service, but yes, you can go all the way back to your fiscal year 2019, that would have started in August 31st of 2018 forward, and look to see, was everything appropriately on the cost report? Were there expenses that could have been allocated differently? Was there some revenue that might have been missed? Was there some statistical changes that could have been made? Were some, there expenses that were removed that shouldn't have been removed? And all of that can happen all the way back to your time of service of, all the way back to fiscal year 9/30/2019. So you can go back that far. You have a window, so you have three years, once it's final settled, to actually reopen those cost reports. This would not necessarily be going back to specific insurance companies, commercial carriers, or anything like that to request additional reimbursement. It would primarily be just with the Medicare fee-for-service cost report. The other thing that I'm not aware of, and again, this is still somewhat high level from what I was able to review, until we can actually get in and look at more detail, that would depend on what support you have for that, too. So I've been able to go back with some hospitals and get a lot of money on older years, as long as they have good documentation and support, and there was an opportunity that exists. Sometimes there are no opportunities that exist, so I'm not promising anything on that side of it. But the other area to look at that is also, because of such a switch from your Medicare fee-for-service over to your Medicare managed care, is making sure your contracts are also in place to reimburse you. Just because you accept a Medicare managed care plan doesn't mean they have to pay you the same as your fee-for-service and it's timely. So getting the cost report done and done accurately and efficiently as quickly as possible is really important, because most Medicare managed care plans will not reimburse you until Medicare has already accepted it and given you a new rate letter. I'd have to look at your specific contracts for sure on that, but that's an area that I see. When you get to the end of the year, and I'm not sure how much the board commissioners gets into the hospital operations and the cost reports, but if you get to the end of the year and Medicare owes you a lot of money, everybody's really happy, because Medicare owes you a lot of money. But the Medicare managed care plans will pay you throughout the year at your approved rate. If you get to the end of the year and Medicare fee-for-service owes you a lot of money, that means you were underpaid by your Medicare managed care plans throughout the whole year. And most contracts will not allow you to reconcile that back. That might have been a longer answer than what you were looking for?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Ms. Chair, I got something.
Yes.
Is there any indication when a state of Florida will approve the REH model?
It looked like the House and the Senate both passed it back in March, and it was waiting for the governor, is what it looked like. There's 19 states across the country that have approved it so far, the rural emergency hospital. There's a couple that are close, within the next month or two, but at least the research I was able to do so far looked like both the state and the House passed it, that it was just waiting for the governor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Karen, do you have anything else?
Yes, I do have a few other things I was going to go through real quickly, if that's okay.
Yes, ma'am, please proceed.
All right, so here's some contact information of how to reach me if you need to. And remember, whether you're a critical access hospital, a rural emergency hospital, or a spoken system wheel, is the kind of highlight to look at, each system kind of runs their rural hospitals a little differently. Just remember, you can't be all things for all people, but what you can do, do it well. I looked on your website, you have some very appropriate patient testimonials that support that philosophy, which is exactly, you got your patients in, you cared for them appropriately. If you had to get them to a larger facility, you were able to do that, which is, which is exactly what rural healthcare providers are there to do, to save as many lives as they can, but yet provide that primary healthcare in the community. As a rural healthcare, again, as a rural healthcare provider, you have a lot in common with other similar organizations, remote locations and service area, your aging population, recruitment and retention issues. And again, that's not just for the providers. A lot of individuals spoke on those, focused on recruitment and retention issues with just, for doctors and practitioners, nurse practitioners, APPs, or physician assistants, but we're seeing it even more on the clinical side, and even on the non-clinical side, getting into those backend office support jobs. There's struggles in maintaining healthcare that don't always support the economies of scale. Again, need to be financially successful. And, but you just make sure you keep in mind that your uniqueness, and know that one size doesn't fit all, and what works for you might not be different than the others have been able to be successful with as well. And again, my passion is just in being rural healthcare. Rural healthcare providers, I feel, are crucial and critical to their communities. Myself and my family use our local critical access hospital. My oldest daughter's an X-ray tech at a critical access hospital, so they're, I'm very passionate about keeping that rural healthcare in the community for whatever it looks like for that community, because they all are different. The other additional information I provided here was just other solutions to help the healthcare providers obtaining a full reimbursement. And again, I wasn't going to go in great detail, I wasn't sure how we were going to be on time, so I just want to make sure you had other, other services that we offer and other ways that we can support you if you decide to choose us as your partner vendor. And again, that rural health for us is, is not just a niche, it's a passion, I feel very strongly about that. We also offer different transaction advisory services. We have actual experience in Florida, both at several different hospital systems in the area, and at First Coast, which is your Medicare contractor. And we are also a member of the BDO Alliance, which allows us to, as an independent member, allows us access to a variety of different other firms across the country to support us in any way that we need. That was what I had, but I'm open for any other questions.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any additional questions? Ms. Karen, thank you for your presentation today. So we have been going through, now you're the third, and we appreciate all the input we've got from all three of you to try... we've got from all three of you, to try to make a decision from here about who we're going to partner with or hire, as it will, to help move us forward and help us start trying to answer some of these questions, and put our best foot forward in healthcare. And I, I will reiterate what you touched on in your presentation. Whatever we do at Williams, and whatever it winds up looking like, that is a good next step in healthcare, it's not the final step. There are a lot of issues in our communities, there are a lot of other services that we potentially could do, that we need to be doing, but we seem to be hung up here, but that, that's why we're talking to all of you guys, to try to find someone that we can get alongside of us, to help us be more informed and take an orderly, potentially step toward the direction of being intentional, to do something to do what we need to do at Williams Memorial Hospital, build a new facility, whatever that looks like, you know, have whatever services we can have there, expand, partner if that winds up working out. And there are a lot of things up in the air, but we do appreciate the presentation today, because again, you're, you're the third, we appreciate your take on it and everything you brought to the table.
Not a problem, I appreciate it as well, and I, I hope, I wish you the best, and I, and good luck in whatever you decide, so, thank you.
Before I dismiss Ms. Karen, Commissioners, do you have any other questions? Everybody good? Ms. Karen, thank you for your time, and thank you for being here with us today.
Not a problem, have a great day, thank you.
All right.
Bye.
Let's take a five-minute recess.
Franklin County is now back in session. Here with this, continuing the meeting, we are in the planning zone adjustment board report. Mr. Stevens? You're doing it today, right?
That's why I said Mr. Planning Zone.
There you go.
Y'all bear with me a little bit, because...
Oh, you'll do fine.
We'll do something.
Ms. Chairman, you might want to warn him to speak into that microphone.
I will. You've got two.
All right, go ahead, sir, please proceed.
The first one we have is a critical control line application for 2360 schooner landing for a four by 186-foot dune walkover, 744 square foot. And that one was, had a motion to approve, and passed forward, nothing.
Okay, all right, pleasure the board.
I haven't looked at it, Mr. Chairman, if you'll, if you'll give me a minute, I'll look at it.
Okay, that's fine.
I haven't...
And it says their state permit hasn't been received, correct?
Yes. I think it's expired, I think this one had expired, but it's turtle season, so they can't.
Do it right now?
They can't do it right now, you know, so by the time turtle season's over, they, they've reapplied. This is one that Mr. Garlic passed away, this one was in the process, and they kind of got shuffled back.
Okay. Well, you answered one question I was going to have, because I see it says to construct this dune walkover, knowing what time of year it is with turtle season, that would, that would have been my question, you know what I mean? But you answered that, so I'm good with it.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman? Steve, with it being expired, they don't have to go back through the process again with the state as far as permits, the federal permits?
They seemed pretty confident that it was going to not be an issue, so I guess it'd be contingent on, I mean, that, that they're going to get it. I mean, it was, it was, if he hadn't have passed away, it would have been before.
We've pointed it already.
Okay.
All right. Pleasure the board.
So moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any additional discussion?
Just out of curiosity, or again, you know, me and you just had a discussion about something else, but is this putting the cart in front of the horse? I mean, what if they don't get state approval? I mean, is there...
They, they had state approval, and then it expired, so it...
They'd just be asking for...
That's why, that's why I asked that question.
But, Mr. Chairman, if they, excuse me, I'm sorry, if they approved it before, they're going to prove it again, it just time ran out, it seems like, because of Mr. Garlic's passing, things got kind of held up a little bit, from what it sounds like. So if they got approved before, I wouldn't imagine they wouldn't be able to not get approved again.
No, my, my thought process was, is just, why don't they just get the state approval, then come back, and we can do, you know what I mean, and just...
We can do it either way.
But I mean, it, it's fine.
Do you want me to make my motion to do it contingent on the permits?
I mean, it just seems like that would be more the avenue we should take with it, I mean personally, but that's, that's up to everyone.
I'll, I'll amend my motion to say I'll approve this contingent on the state permits being approved.
I'm in my second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so the motion and the second have been amended to reflect that it is contingent on the state permit being received again for the project. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's your end.
Next item is 322 patent drive, it's for a commercial site plan review, and it's for five 10 by 25 lots of 250 square foot per unit, 1,250 foot in previous coverage, and it is, they've had parking, if you...
Are there storage units, Steve?
No, this is going to be for, it looks to... No, this is going to be for, it looks to be the part model RVs.
Little cottages.
There's a little RV place. I think he's wanting to do a RV rental.
Mr. Chairman, just so, when I was researching this as well, I think there's the same thing, just a few, a little ways down from this, there's already some cottages in that area, right? From another property owner?
There is. That's down where some C1 used to be. The only thing I would ask, though, because it seemed to not have been clear when we were doing that other project that the commissioner is referring to, is if they're asking, the site plan review is for part model, that in other words, ones that look like little mobile homes, then that's what they're being approved for, they're not being approved for five RV slots.
Right.
So they can't mix and match. Is that understandable, what was presented to P and Z?
Well, he's got, if you look at here, he's got proposed mobile tiny house.
Right.
And so that would, I must...
Yeah, similar to what they have down in the street at Mrs. Reed's.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
They have down where?
Where, how, where, yeah, yeah, where Susan's at. And was that discussed, do you know if that was discussed at P and Z, the fact that there would not, it would not be a substitute place for an RV to park, and it's for those part model homes?
I don't recall if they discussed that or not.
Okay.
I know it was...
What was the outcome of the vote?
The outcome, they approved it 4-0.
I'm good with approving it, but I'd like, if there is a motion to approve it, that the commissioners make it contingent, that it's all going to be part model RVs, or, no, part model homes, not RVs.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question on that?
Yep.
With that, this, I guess, is more for Steve, but those have to be able to pull them out, correct?
In any case of a storm, you have to be able to remove them.
Because, I mean, I've looked at similar ones, and it looks like they're all hard plumbed in.
There should be quick connects.
Everything should be quick disconnect on them, and they're, so they'll be below base flood, so they have to be able to be able to move them when there's a storm.
Are we following up on that in other instances with that, per se?
We haven't.
I mean, I'm not throwing you under the bus, I'm just asking, because...
It's the requirement, but we haven't got, we usually have a lot of stuff going.
Yeah, I understand.
So we don't really have the staff at this point, that we've got into, we've only got a few of them. I think Coastline's got two or three, but they've actually moved theirs away from the water to the back of the property, so they don't have to move it.
And the reason I ask is that we're also talking about having an RV ordinance with that
Yes.
distance right there.
This basically would be an RV park, I mean, being approved as a commercial site, as an RV park, it would be...
Well, is it C3 property?
It's C3.
Okay. Okay.
And water, Mr. Chairman, water and sewer is available for the property. There's a letter here saying that they will, they do have that service.
Any more questions, or what is the pleasure of the board? Approved, denied, table?
I mean, Mr. Chairman, if there's one right down the road that's the same thing, we can't, I mean, I mean, that's my opinion. I'll make a motion to approve contingent upon, to ensure that the property owner's uses the actual mobile tiny home and not an RV, or not RVs.
Okay, so a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward?
I'll second.
A second by Commissioner Anderson.
With a comment.
All right, go ahead.
With this, we need to be, now that we have, guess, we have the police department, or sheriff's department, excuse me, that's doing code enforcement or whatnot, we might want to engage with them to make sure that these tiny mobile, whatever they call it, is able to scat, so to speak.
When we declare a state emergency, that's what they do.
Exactly, yeah.
And that was the, well, that was going back to when Miss Susan's was approved, that was actually one of the conditions the board put, that everything had to be quick disconnect, and they were made to understand that if they were approved, anytime a storm came and there was any kind of evacuation, they had to move. So, no, that should be the same here. All right, any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's your names. All right, go ahead, Mr. Stevens.
The last item we have was the landings at SGI. It was consideration for requests for recommendation of the proposed PUD ordinance for the landings at 41 West Basile Drive, St. George Island. And that one was, was had a motion to deny and carried for zero against.
Okay.
All right.
And, Mr. Chairman, this is just for the public hearing, that's what we're voting on today. We're not voting on the project, we're voting on whether or not this gets taken to a public hearing.
We're not procedurally in a place, Commissioner, to be able to vote today to approve, deny, table, or anything with the project.
Right.
Because we're not in a public hearing setting. Again, the only thing we could possibly do today is potentially approve or deny a public hearing, that's it. All right, well, before we get started with any more deliberations, I have a handful of speaker cards here, so I'll start at the top. Ms. Georgia Ackerman, that'll want to speak during this item on the agenda. Please go forward, state your name for the record, you have five minutes.
Good morning, I'm Georgia Ackerman with Apalachicola Riverkeeper. I'll be brief. I know you have a lot going on. For starters, as always, we appreciate your leadership in the county. I want to just highlight, you're aware, Riverkeeper Cameron Baxley came before you during the public hearing, and she also recently spoke at the P and Z meeting, and I know you've had a chance to review those comments and concerns, so I won't go through all of those again. I just want to emphasize again that the proposal and the potential impacts to the Apalachicola Bay remain high on our list of numerous concerns. I know that we all want to see the bay make a full recovery, and we know that ensuring high-quality water in the bay is essential to the livelihoods, of course, of all of the aquatic species that are commercial and recreational fishing and tourism rely on, but of course, the livelihoods of many people in our community. And I just wanted to say that again, and appreciate your time and consideration of the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Georgia. Mr. John Alber, I hope I said your name right, I'm sorry, sir. Please go forward, state your name for the record, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam Vice Chairman, Commissioners, my name is John Alber. I live at 246th Street in Apalachicola, full-time. I'm a retired businessman and lawyer, long since retired. And I'm here out of, I pay attention to legal matters and business matters as they affect the bay, because, and the river, because I love the river and the bay, and maybe because I like complicated things. I don't think a hearing is appropriate yet, and I think others will say this, because there are too many open questions to take before the public. But there is one question I want to draw the commission's attention to, that I don't think has been asked, much less answered. And the question is, who is it, and especially, what is it, that we're dealing with here? Who is the entity that we're dealing with? Well, you've seen very sophisticated presentations and materials that were created by the Edgewater Group, the cluster of companies known as the Edgewater Group, and that's not who we're dealing with. And you've heard about the Blue Water Group that has to do with the membrane reactor, that's not who we're dealing with. The PUD ordinance, the Planned Unit Development Ordinance, says we're dealing with Landing at St. George Island LLC, which, as far as I can tell, doesn't exist yet. The real estate is owned by Landing at SGI LLC that was created in January of 2023. It's a brand-new thing. So, an interesting thing about that last corporation, that last LLC, is that if you look at its corporate address, it's a field outside of Quincy, Florida. And that's not especially important or unusual, except for one thing. These types of LLCs, and we're getting to what this is, almost always have some cubicle at the top of a high-rise in Miami, or a storefront in a strip mall in Fort Lauderdale, or a field in Quincy as their corporate headquarters, because they're not about business. These types of LLCs have three purposes, really. To get the project off the ground, to get the investors paid as quickly as possible, and to keep the citizens of Franklin County, in this case, as far away from the assets and the investors as is legally possible. Now, there are entities that are protected, there's probably bank money involved in this transaction, or money from REITs somewhere, and those entities are protected with security interests and collateral galore, all kinds of protections, and the investors themselves are protected by their stakes. But what about the citizens of Franklin County? What happens if, say, another Dennis comes along, or another Michael, anything within 100 miles west of here, and the fuel tanks are crushed, or that membrane reactor has exploded, and all of that toxic waste settles on oyster reefs that have existed since before humans came to this place? What happens? Can you look to this LLC? Well, the assets will have been sold off to all the homeowners. And they're not in privity, they don't have a contractual relationship with the county, there's nothing you can do about that. All that will be left is a wisp of a corporate entity, just a wisp. And maybe an operating company will take over that. So what happens when any one of these problems occurs that people will talk about? What can the county do? And the answer is, not very much at all. Because there will be just a wisp of an entity left, not a real business. There is no BP, no British Petroleum lurking here to make everything right, or to try to. Now, in my estimation, it's not worth it, it's not worth that kind of risk, especially when this kind of entity is advancing this proposition. There are too many problems and too little security for the citizens of Franklin County. And that's all I have to say. I don't think a public hearing is called for at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison Goodman, or Goodson, I'm sorry. Blame it on my glasses. Is Allison here? She attended by Zoom.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for taking the time to hear from me this morning, and my comments I think will dovetail nicely with attorney Albers. My name is Allison Goodson. I am a concerned regulatory attorney and homeowner on St. George Island, not a rental home. And for all of the reasons that have been discussed at the public workshop back in March, and at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting last week, I oppose this project moving forward to a public hearing. Practically speaking, and to Mr. Albers' point, the public just simply does not have adequate information at this point, and frankly, it doesn't seem as though the developer has enough information to be putting this proposal hearing yet. The developer has touted its plans for the marina to begin with just 10 wet slips in order to avoid what apparently the developer acknowledges would be mandatory shellfish bed closures, were they to exceed that 10 bed, that 10-slip limit. But there's no commitment anywhere in their glossy proposals, or in the draft PUD, to stick with just 10 slips, rather than coming back later and seeking to enhance that when business interests become the driver here, as opposed to the interests of the community that are resulting in this public outcry. Between that and the lack of any stated plan for guarding against or mitigating sewage spills into the bay from the publicly available sanitary pump-out component of the marina, from the developer's admission at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting last week, that they haven't even figured out yet what the fuel storage or engineering plans will be for the fuel dock, which they neglected to mention at all in any of their materials, we just don't know enough yet about what this project actually looks like, let alone what it could do to this place in order to intelligently discuss at a public hearing whether it makes sense for our community or not. And so I'd urge this commission, however unusual it may be, based on past practice, to exercise its prerogative to not send this forward to a public hearing, and to instead heed the recommendation from your Planning and Zoning Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Claus.
I'm not as prepared as everyone else. I'm Cheryl Claus, I live on St. George Island. And I just want to ask the county commissioners to consider this holistically, and to ask a question that I've been asking myself. What is the benefit to this project to the people of Franklin County? And when I ask that, I get a couple of responses. One says, "Well, we're going to create jobs." But the jobs that they're talking about creating, to my understanding of reading it, are waitressing jobs and cleaning jobs, the kind of jobs we can't fill now, because we don't have affordable housing to allow those kinds of wage jobs to be here. It may or may not be a marina that is probably maybe public now, but wasn't before, but is, but there's no boat ramp, there's no trailer parking. I mean, I know I'm echoing what other people have said, but it's just, there's not a clear intent right now, and there's not a clear project that creates the kind of benefit that makes this something that we need to further consider. The onus is not on Franklin County to do these people's job and tell them how to make this appeal to us, and what they need to fill in. Their job is to present to us a plan that we can either approve or deny. And Planning and Zoning has found that this is something that they unanimously could not get behind. And I believe that the developers have tried, when they have heard complaints, to maybe address them as much as they could, but they're not investing the money to come up with a full plan. They're not investing any time or effort to reach out to the people of Franklin County. And when the head of Planning and Zoning, David Duncan, asked the CEO standing here, "Have you gone to the civic club? Have you talked to the people?" His answer, a matter of public record, was, "Why? We have no need to do that." I've lived in a lot of communities, and one of the things that's unique about Franklin County is we're so small, and we're a family, and we may not always love each other, we may not always like each other, but we are a family. And when things like Michael or Dennis hit, we work together. We are one. And I find it hard to understand how anybody who has not reached out to the community, who has not wanted to reach out to the community, can fit into this community. And you do have the onus of responsibility of taking care of the citizens of Franklin County. And this corporation may own a piece of land, but I'm not sure they're citizens. Thank you.
Ms. Barbara Sanders?
Barbara Sanders, thank you for affording us all the right to speak. I also think that the public hearing would be premature. I think at a public hearing, you're going to have all the questions that have been raised. I think it's only fair to the developer to say, "Go back to the drawing board and answer these questions," so that when we have a public hearing, I know what they're proposing, you know what they're proposing, and we can discuss the merits of a final or almost final plan. They say they've looked at 80 plans, I think they had 81, they had a PowerPoint at the P and Z that I have yet, I can't get a copy of, it wasn't submitted. They need to do 82. And on their 82nd plan, they need to explain why they're able to use submerged land in their density calculation. Your own staff in their comments on the proposed ordinance ask that very question. It shows a 26-acre parcel, but they get 33 acres. I believe they're trying to use submerged land, but that's a simple thing they could answer for you, because if it is submerged land, that can't be counted in density. And they need to know that upfront. I mean, they need to go back to the drawing board, and you say, "You can't use submerged land." The fuels facility is not mentioned or detailed. I think what I heard the developer say was, they had interpreted your zoning code as saying the fuel dock is an incidental use to the marina, and they translated that or used the synonym of unimportant. I don't think an incidental use means they can leave it out of your ordinance and leave it out. I mean, we need to know what the plan is. I mean, we need to know what the plan is for this extremely important part of the Marina, because that's the thing that will spill into your oyster beds, and more into fishing. So I think they need to be informed. Incidental use doesn't mean unimportant use, and we need that information before we go to a public hearing, because then at the public hearing, we're just spinning our wheels, and we're going to table it, and do it all over again. They got business, I got retirement. Let's be more efficient about this. So the other thing is that the developer doesn't specify what happens to the effluent. So you've got the magic membrane box that's going to cut out all the, as much as they can. But where does the almost-clean effluent go? At the hearing, they mentioned a deep-water well. I am not a sewer engineer, or any other kind of engineer, but I've been told over the years there's a freshwater lens under the island, and that if you put polluted water into that because of osmosis, and you boys can correct me on the science, but it is not good to put your effluent into that lens. You've got no plans on that. We're going to go to a public hearing? One of you smart people is going to say, "Hey, guys, where are you putting your effluent?" And they're going to spring this well on you, and you're not going to have any details. So you need all that before we have a public hearing. Give me another chance to knock it down, right? So then the other thing, the one that's near and dear to my heart, is traffic. They talk about a road coming off of the entry road, and then there were some exits onto Bay Shore, it's a little bit further down from Harriers. But you ran into this over in East Point, where it became a congestion problem, and FDOT sent out something at the last minute. And we really didn't get a chance to, you know, calmly address this in a public meeting. The zoning, the ordinance that they've proposed in and of itself has items, it needs to be tightened up. I think Mr. Schuler, once he's able to focus on it, can put all the details in there. They talk about voting public, but at the P and Z, they said it was totally private. They mentioned something about a previous discussion with FDOT on traffic. I think that has to do with the East Point. I don't know if they just took this from the East Point PUD. The legal description, I've looked at the two Ds, what George Floyd's company bought, what this company bought, they did a reworking of the legal description. I'd like to see a survey. What land are we talking about? So there are just too many questions. Nothing mentions condos, but as I understand it, they're going to, the front of the dry stack is going to be condos, and we don't have any condo zoning. I mean, nothing's mentioned about that. So I vote with the rest of this gang to ask you guys to not approve it, to accept the recommendation of your P and Z. Maybe a compromise is to not make them go back to the P and Z when they come up with Plan Number 82 that answers these questions. But I think you need more info before we go to a public hearing. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Rome, is Mr. Tom alive?
I'm sorry, did you say?
Rebecca Jutan.
Yep, she is. Mr. Tom? I'm asking you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Rebecca Jutan, 2926 Cross Creek Court, Tallahassee, formerly from Carabel. Before you consider a PUD for this development, a comprehensive land use change is needed. Six acres of the property has a density of one unit per acre, and the rest is limited by 80% impervious in the commercial recreation area. The site plan currently shows dwelling units in excess of the one unit per acre in that six-acre portion. Chapter 163, 3202 of the Florida statutes requires local governments to adopt land development regulations, or a planned unit development, that's consistent with a comprehensive plan. So I don't see how you can approve a PUD before you get a comprehensive plan amendment. I strenuously object to the dredging. I think it will have adverse effects on the oyster reefs, where the state has contributed millions of dollars to restore the bay. And the following, and when you do your comprehensive plan update, I hope you'll consider prohibiting new dredging in that plan amendment, and also including in that amendment that a local permit has to be issued before DEP and Army Corps permits are recognized. The following things about this site plan are inconsistent with your comprehensive plan, and are the legal reasons you can deny this plan. First of all, they are not complying with the setback of development 50 feet from mean high water and wetlands. Your plan requires that any development within 150 feet of mean-high water can't have more than 20% impervious coverage. Your plan requires a water quality monitoring plan for the Marina. Development in the coastal high-hazard zone is supposed to be limited to one unit per acre, and if not, they're required to donate land that would remain vacant, or contribute money for hurricane evacuation. The contribution or placing their wetlands in a conservation easement is a good step forward, but those are undevelopable wetlands in the first place, so they shouldn't count toward this mitigation requirement. You need to require them in the site plan to show you that they're not exceeding 80% lot coverage under their commercial portion. Your plan also provides that you're supposed to prohibit high-density development adjacent to wetlands. You're supposed to require a Type III sewage pump-out for wet slips. You're supposed to require 1.5 inches of stormwater runoff treatment, and they are supposed to have a hurricane evacuation plan for the Marina. So I agree that this is not ready for a PUD hearing. They haven't provided you with a site plan that's consistent with your comprehensive plan. You're under no obligation to approve this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary Ann Fisher? I believe I said that right. Is that correct?
Mary Ann Fisher, correct.
State your name, you have five minutes.
I'm Mary Ann Fisher, and I live in Carabel. I agree with all the other presenters. I don't see why you have to have it go to a public hearing. As Mr. Albert, Attorney Albert, mentioned, if there is an ecological problem, either caused by the development, or caused by a hurricane, there's no entity, there'll be no entity for you to go after, to collect the funds, to mitigate what happens in a disaster, and it does nothing for the community. I mean, the jobs that it's going to provide aren't jobs that we need. We already have places that can't fill maid service jobs, or waitressing jobs. And just the infrastructure here, you have a volunteer fire department, East Point Fire Department covers St. George Island. They already have enough work, they have to go all the way up to the forest. How are they going to handle that? How are we going to be, are we going to have to beef up the fire department? You'd have to beef up your law enforcement. You have a hospital that already has problems. How are they going to service these, this large influx group? And your roads. So I would vote that there's no reason to go to a public hearing. You can either go back to the development, or table, table the development altogether. There's other ways you can bring a tax base to Franklin County. And thank you for hearing our comments. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. All right. Mr. Stevens, did you have anything else to say? You said everything you need to say. Okay. This is a pleasure, the board. Again, the request today is to take this to a public hearing, is what they've asked.
Mr. Chairman, I'll start. First of all, I listened to the Planning and Zoning meeting Tuesday night. I listened to everybody's comments. I came on late, but I got most of the gist of the public comments. A lot of the public comments, we heard, we listened. I do agree that there's still a lot of questions to answer, but isn't that the purpose of a public hearing? Is to get those questions answered? So that's just my opinion and thoughts. Do I think that there's still a lot of work to be done? Absolutely. Does that mean that, you know, we're 1 of 5, we're going to approve or not approve? But I believe that we can either, because procedurally, Attorney Schuler, if we table this, if we deny it, they have to wait another year to come back? Then they have to start the process over again?
The way that one-year waiting period works is, if you have a public hearing, and you deny the, whatever development is proposed, there is a one-year waiting period, they can't bring that same development back. But for example, if they were to make a substantial modification, of course, that determination, substantial modification, is not something that Mark and myself can weigh in on unless we actually see it, but if there's a substantially modified development application, they wouldn't have to wait a full year to submit something different, but they do have a one-year waiting period to submit the same project again. That's the way, that's the way we've always dealt with the one-year waiting period.
And if we table, that means that they can come to you, or we can come to you and say, is that, what time limit is that if we table?
The tabling would be at the discretion of the board. I think the tabling would need to address at least two issues. One, the time of the tabling, because if you table something, then typically, you know, you want to have, what this board has been doing is saying, "Well, if we table it now, we want at the next meeting, the following information." Or, "Within the next 30 days, we want the following information." So there needs to be a time limit, and then secondarily, they would need to be, you know, what information is it that the board wants? But I tend to agree most with your first comment, is that's the purpose of a public hearing, is to give everyone their opportunity to present, and if the board doesn't like the information that you've received, I mean, you've tabled PUD hearings before, just like, I can't think of the name of the one on the other end of the island bridge, but that was tabled at least once or twice.
It was.
Excuse me, I've got sinusitis going on or something. But y'all tabled that in order to have additional information brought back to the board, because there were questions that the board wanted to have answered. So you would then table it, and they would come back with that information, and then the board would make a decision based on the new information provided.
And one more question, Mr. Chairman, if you will. The, I lost my train of thought. So the approve, hypothetically, if we approved this, it's just to go to a public hearing for them to answer questions. That's it. Have a public, procedurally, in the past, anybody that's come before this board for a PUD, zoning change, a land use change, we've always typically allowed for the public hearing to give them their due diligence.
Commissioner, I can't remember a time the board did not give someone a public hearing when they asked for it. Doesn't mean that the board's going to approve what's being asked, but the board has always, to my recollection, allowed people a public hearing when they've asked for it.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
I've got something to say, and it's off the wall, but I'm going to say it anyway. You know, Planning and Zoning is a board that is answerable to the county commission. We can either take their decision, or we don't have to take their decision. And we've done that a lot. They came to us with a lot of things that they approved, and we denied. And it can do both ways. But we've always had a process in this county, where when someone comes before us, whether we like the project or not, we always give them the ability to have their story heard, or be able to talk to the board, and, you know, answer questions, and whatever like this. In February, if I'm not mistaken, I think in February, you all held a workshop to discuss the land.
In March.
In March, no. Well, I know I was there.
I'm talking.
Yeah, I know I was there. But anyway, you always have, you know, in the past, and I do want to put on record that, you know, and I think it is on record, that Planning and Zoning voted totally to not deny everything on this. So we could go with a denial, and go out there and not even do anything about it. But we've always tried to do the best we could by the people. And whether I like the project or not is not for me to say. It's for us to look at the information, to make the best decisions we know, have the historical knowledge that we have, have the ability to look at the people's project, and see if we, as representatives of the people of Franklin County, will allow this or not. And so we've had the, we've had the public workshop. Now, I believe we need to go to a public hearing. And once we do that public hearing, Mr. Chairman, this board needs to make a decision of whether to move forward or deny. And that's it. We don't need to have this going back and forth, and going back and forth, and going back and forth, because it causes turmoil in the community.
It does.
And personally, I don't like it. I've got another little woman in my life that needs a replacement in three months. But on the serious matter, this is what, I mean, we've always did this, and it's not, it's not for each one of us commissioners to decide, it's the policy that this board has always carried on, to go, to go and follow that process. So, Mr. Chairman, I, you know, that's my statement, right there.
Anyone else?
I just got a quick comment. I did, too, listen to the whole P and Z meeting, and, you know, we heard in the work, the public workshop back in March, the concerns. And with the, you already answered my questions a couple of times, Attorney Schuler, but about the precedence of the public hearing. And, you know, Mr. John, you were talking about the who is and the what is, you know, maybe some of that information, y'all have heard his concerns, y'all have heard the people's concerns today, you heard the concerns in March. Hopefully, those concerns get asked. I mean, I got a page here myself, but that's where I'm at on it.
Well, I will say this, as the commissioner of the district. It has been our normal method of operation, to always have any property owner that asks for a public hearing, they've been granted it. So, I mean, I don't know how the board's going to vote today, but however the board votes, I'm going to vote with them, because we are a unified board that's serving Franklin County. So however that goes, I'm good with that. And I want people to understand and know, if you were the property owner asking for your right to be heard, how would it feel if you were talking about telling them, you know, you don't have a right to be heard? I just think that's a bad precedent, regardless of whether anything's liked or disliked. That's not what's being decided here today. But I assure you, it will be decided for its own good.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, a lot of the questions that the public has spoke about are great questions. They're the same questions that I have. And also, in addition to watching and listening to all the concerns today, and the P and Z meeting from Tuesday, I've also received a lot of emails, as I'm sure the rest of you have as well. But again, this is something that, me personally, if I was asking, coming before this board for a zoning or land use change, and you told me, "No, I couldn't have a public hearing to speak my piece," I would be upset, especially if you've granted it in the past. And in March, and correct me if I'm wrong, when we had the public workshop, different from a hearing, obviously, their plans changed. So what they presented at the workshop, things are different now. And I just, I agree that everything that has been said today, but I also feel like that we need to give them their due diligence, and answer these questions that, that are asked. And hopefully, they'll be prepared to answer those questions. So I know it's probably going to not be a good move on my part, but I've explained to some of the same people that's emailed me, that the only thing we're approving today, if we hypothetically approve it, is for a public hearing. We're not approving the project, it's just to move forward to a public hearing, which I feel like everyone should get the opportunity to have. So I'm going to motion to approve, to take this to a public hearing.
We have a motion to approve this request for a public hearing. Matthew Mr. Ward. We have a motion to approve this request for a public hearing, Matthew Commissioner Ward. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? I have a discussion item. Commissioner, uh, or since this is pretty, pretty big ticket item, are we going to hold this public hearing at five o'clock in the afternoon?
I think it should be, yes.
That was going to be my suggestion.
I just want to make sure before we move forward with voting. I believe it needs to be at a time where the most people that can be there, that want to be there will be able to.
Yes. How's everyone's schedule looking for the eighteenth of the second meeting in June? June eighteenth? Five?
I'm sorry?
June eighteenth at five?
I'll, I'll go where they tell me to go.
Okay, that would be long.
You'd be out of.
Yeah, June eighteenth.
June fourth, that's out next to us, two weeks. Everybody be okay with it in two weeks?
Do we have enough time to advertise? If we do it June fourth, we got time to advertise in that time?
For June eighteenth?
June fourth.
June fourth.
Fourth is what they're asking.
Yeah, that would be tough.
Can we have any other day than a board meeting?
We could, we could.
Sure.
Won't we have it, won't we have it the Monday on the seventeenth?
I can't. Yeah. So.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Well, do the thirteenth.
And Mr. Chairman, I.
In between.
I can do, I'm usually available Wednesdays and Thursdays. It would be good things for me.
Wednesday's a good day.
Yeah.
Wednesday's a good day.
What date are we looking at, Mike?
How about the, if Thursdays are good, how about the?
Do we have a thirteen?
Wednesdays are the thirteens.
Is that good?
I can't do the thirteens, sorry.
How about the twelve?
Twelve's good.
Twelve's good for everybody?
How about you, Angela?
No, I'm still out.
On the twelve?
Yeah.
Apologize, this is like it is, but we do need to settle this.
Uh, twentieth?
I'm good. Are you out?
Is that going to be a five block?
I'm still out.
Yeah, he's out that hole.
What does it want to be here?
Yeah, that's the day, yeah, that's the day.
Coming when you're here, I could kind of schedule around that.
Yeah.
I'm here to. I said that one week was too close for the advertisement. I'm here the thirteenth, fourteenth. I'm here.
Conferences, the.
Last week of June.
The twenty-fourth.
Yeah, we all out that week. I'm here the twenty-fourth, which is that Monday.
And then we go to. The first of July?
Everything's open for me in July. All my conferences in June.
July second?
That's good for me.
That's a meeting day, July second.
I'm good.
It'll be gone or be new.
On the Tuesday?
Yeah.
The, July second is a normal commission meeting day.
We got a normal meeting that day.
July second, yes.
Okay. I mean, I'm good with whatever else, because we haven't voted yet. So we, but we do need to talk about a date before we vote.
Yes.
Because if we do approve it, we need to know what date it's going to be.
Because I could start the ads.
Yes. You know, the second, you know, another day, it doesn't matter to me.
I'm good with the second.
I'm good with the second.
Is, is, is a Friday completely out of the question?
No.
I mean, I know it's, I mean, the fourteenth right there, you're going to be.
I'm here fourteen.
That's on a Friday.
I, I can do the fourteen.
Can you do the fourteen?
That'd be June fourteenth on a Friday.
Yeah, I can do that.
Does that work?
Yeah, I think I get ads in.
Well, that'd be the same, well, never mind, I'm going to be quiet.
So, audience, please don't laugh. So I want to be very clear here. We're talking about meeting at five o'clock on a Friday afternoon to discuss.
That's fine.
Just want to make sure.
I don't do nothing on Friday night.
Oh, so clearing that up, that's all.
We might all need a cocktail.
I might have that public hearing. Normally I don't do nothing on Friday night.
So is everybody good with that date?
Commissioner Grum? Friday?
Any more discussion before we vote?
And we're adding that to our.
We're adding that to the motion. If that's okay.
Six fourteen at five o'clock.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? That's your names. All right. Uh, before we go into our public hearings, let's take a short recess.
Take a good little break, because you cannot start a public hearings until eleven o'clock.
That's right.